Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. As we start all meetings, I would like to remind you, we are on Zoom tonight, but we are being broadcast live. So everyone can see or hear what's going on here this evening. We will be having public comment. I will try to keep going as good as I can. As you know, I can only see five of you at a time, so bear with me. As we're trying to line up, I will try to keep track of who, what, where, when. So if there are no other questions, I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag? A pledge allegiance to the flag. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to audit with a roll call. Hillary Niffen.
I've unmuted.
Sorry, I lost my mouse here.
Steve Boyce.
Yeah.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Fred Small.
Here.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Dawn Byers.
Yes.
David Forth.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Dan Colady.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The meeting has been called to order. Jeff, do you have anyone on deck for public comment?
I have, I have two people here. I'm going to admit the first one. It looks like her name is Sarah Wall. So I'm admitting her now. She's connecting.
Sarah Wall, this is Bob Hayes, the chair of the school committee. Are you here? Can you hear me? I just saw something that said Sarah Wall left.
He's, no, she's.
He's here. Do you have a comment?
I do. Hello. I, um, thank you so much. I have, um, just a brief prepared statement, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. My name is Sarah Wall. And my family and I have been residents of Whitman for the past seven years. My nine-year-old twin boys and my seven-year-old twin girls attend the Conley School. Just this past school year, I was hired and began subbing in the Whitman Hansen School District. Before having children, I taught for several years in the Newton Public School System as an elementary school teacher. However, after having two sets of twins in eighteen months and a husband who ships out for several months at a time, full-time teaching was no longer feasible for me. I have missed teaching greatly, and I thought that subbing would be a wonderful segue to eventually get back into being a full-time educator. So far, my experience subbing within the school district has been very positive. We certainly have some amazing educators in this system and a great student body to boot. That being said, being in the schools has opened my eyes to the lack of subs we currently have in the district and the stress that the sub shortage is causing amongst our district's teachers, administrators, and administrative assistants. I do believe that a large reason we have so few subs is simply the low sub wages. I had reached out to Jeff via email last month and was advised that sub wages would be an agenda item for this school committee meeting. I felt compelled to speak up tonight for those who come into our schools each day enduring health risks in this time of COVID. Actually, they're just calling me to sub right now. I just, I just got a call on my phone. Each day enduring health risks in this time of COVID and who come in ready to give kids their all, most days not even knowing what type of an assignment they are walking into. As a qualified teacher with a master's degree in elementary education, the sub wages in Whitman Hansen do not make me feel valued. If the district offered a higher sub wage, I believe we could attract a larger, more qualified pool of subs. I believe the district can do better. I strongly urge you to consider increasing the sub wages for not only our current subs, but for future subs and for all those who are in need of subs. Thank you again for allowing me to speak in this forum, and I hope to hear a positive outcome on this topic.
Well, Sarah, thank you very much for calling in, and we certainly appreciate the fact that you are subbing in our school district. We, we, we realize that substitute teachers are getting more and more difficult, and it seems like teaching in general is getting more and more difficult during COVID-19. So having said that, thank you for your, for calling in. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else have anything? Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jeff, you have someone else?
Removing Sarah, and I'm going to share Shannon Karen. So Shannon, I'm bringing you in right now. On my screen, it says she's still joining, so.
Okay, no worries. No worries.
I'm not sure if she's still here on my side. Bob is still joining.
Shannon Karen is, I think she is connected.
Okay.
Shannon, are you there?
Yep, she's, I'm bringing her back in. Looks like, yep, she should be here, Bob. Shannon Karen.
Shannon.
She's still connecting.
Okay.
She's in, I muted.
No worries.
Okay, she's gone again.
Well, let's give her another shot at it. We'll get time. Shannon, if you can hear me, sometimes the third time is the charm. I think she may be back.
Oh, that was Mr. Kafka from WAGA.
Okay.
I'm writing a matinee note. Shannon. I have another person. Instead of Shannon right now, it's Nicole Walsh. So I'm going to bring in Nicole Walsh.
Okay.
So I think it's, she's connecting. Nicole Walsh is connecting.
Okay.
Not here yet.
Nicole, are you there?
So just giving you a time check, Bob. We had six more minutes for public comment, if you want to extend or not.
Okay.
Still looking, Nicole looks like she's connecting to audio.
All right. Supposed to be a couple while we're waiting. The next few days of weather I just saw was supposed to be favorable. And we may get a little bit of a cold spell next week, but I don't hopefully see any snow in the future.
Chair Hayes.
Yes, Fred.
Need I remind you it was January twenty-third, a few years ago, before we saw our first storm? Bite your tongue, please, with snow.
I, I get that.
Looks like.
Fred and Melissa. Go ahead.
It looks like Nicole is connected. She's just muted.
Nicole, are you there?
Jeff, are these folks dialing in or are they connecting through a computer?
They're connecting through a computer, at least I see. I have a full name and, and that.
Okay.
And that person has disappeared, Bob. So nobody else is in for public comment.
Okay. They both, they both disappeared.
Correct.
Okay, I think we can move on from public comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Is it okay?
Next up, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Small made a motion.
Seconded by Dan.
Second, Michelle, Mr. Small made the motion, seconded by Mr. Colady. Lori?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
David?
Upstairs.
Bob Hayes, yes. Mr. Colady?
Yes.
Nine with nine, one abstention. Michelle. Michelle, are you muted?
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Student Council Rep Anna Flynn is our student advisor. We weren't sure if she was going to be able to be here this evening because we didn't hear. We were dealing with Mr. Moriarty and True Michelle, and there was some confusion as to whether she was or wasn't. So Anna, thank you for, for coming forward and volunteering for the job, and we would be happy to take your report. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Anna Flynn. Coming from a student's point of view, hybrid learning has been very difficult. It is because it is challenging to stay focused and understand material when there are so many distractions. Some distractions can be Wi-Fi cutting out, glitchy Google meets, family members and the other them, and of course, cell phones and electronic devices. I have heard from my peers that full remote days are less stressful because everyone is online and teachers are focused on everyone at once on the computer screen. Also, the timeframes are better for classes. When everyone is at home, class periods are much more harder if they are longer. It can be so difficult to stare at a computer screen for so many hours at a time. In my opinion, the longer lunch on all remote days helps students stay focused when they go back to their academic classes. Also, all the student council activities have helped lighten up students and staff. The sweater dress contest was successful and exciting. My favorite was a department-themed contest because I thought it was fun to see all the teachers dressed up. I know that the students had fun voting on it as well. The students walking in on Tuesday and Friday before break enjoyed their candy canes at the door. Everyone was happy to have a COVID-safe entrance, too. The murals look nice in the school building, and I feel that they bring a pop vibe along with the window decorations before break. Key Club also had a successful food drive that I'm happy to hear about. On the other hand, I'm very sad to hear that the NHS inductions are being held virtually, but my peers and I understand. This tags along with clubs and activities being held virtually as well. I know that some students actually prefer clubs being later in the evening. For example, I participate in the astronomy club, and I love that the meetings are held at a later time. The student hallway decorating was very fun to participate in. I actually helped set up the decorations with my junior class. I feel it went very well and was safe with COVID protocols, but I heard that more students wanted to help decorate, so my peers and I will make sure to let more people know about it when the next time comes. I have not heard any complaints about sports being held due to, sports being delayed due to going remote. So most importantly, I wanted to comment on these unprecedented difficult times. It has been widely known throughout the student body that negative feedback on the topic of going back to school this Thursday. Many feel we should be full remote for a longer period of time due to the concerns of the COVID-19 virus.
Is that the end of your report?
Yes, thank you.
Great job, young lady. Does anyone have any questions for Anna?
It was a quiet.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Anna, thank you very much. That was a very informative report. It's nice to hear from a student what your thoughts are about hybrid and remote and what's going on and what's happening with the morale of the rest of the students. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, do you have a question?
No, I was saying thank you.
Okay. I just saw you waving, and I was like, okay. All right, Jeff, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Bob. So if you're asking a little bit on, on what we're going to talk about, I've got a really lengthy COVID update. My numbers, since we returned from break, we've had seven positive staff in the office, which include, which we also have, we also have two coaches and forty-one positive students that since we returned on January fourth. We've had approximately thirty-five staff and a hundred and sixty-three students in some of the quarantine. The quarantine includes both varsity and JV basketball girls teams, the varsity girls hockey team, the seventh and eighth grade Hanson girls travel basketball team, and the eighth grade Hanson boys travel basketball teams. We've also had to quarantine four sub-separate special education classrooms in the district over this time period. Just looking at the numbers in both our communities, Hanson over the last fourteen days has reported seventy-four new cases or an eight-point positivity rate, which is higher than the last two weeks. And this is data from last Thursday. New data comes out tomorrow. Whitman has a hundred and thirteen new cases and a nine-point positivity rate, which is lower than last reported. The next piece of this update is, is a little bit of what Anna talked about, the high school shutdown. We are not seeing positive transmission necessarily within our student, our, our student body. We have occasional cases of kids being exposed and then we're close contacts either through an extracurricular activity, an athletic activity, but not necessarily in the classroom outside of our sub-separates. The reason we had to look at shutting the high school down was really a little bit about what the, the, the mom from the district in the substitute was speaking about. We had thirteen staff members in quarantine at the high school, either positive or in quarantine or some sort of COVID issue. Plus, we have daily, we have teachers that have already called out for doctor's appointments, and we have some teachers on long-term medical. So due to lack of staffing and not necessarily the transmission rates within the high school, the high school shut down. Yesterday, after looking at our, our attendance sheet, speaking to the teachers that are coming out of quarantine tomorrow, we were able to open up the high school and go back into cohort B so that students have in-person learning starting tomorrow in the high school. And I know, I know there's some conversation within the high school about is that appropriate or is that not? That's the decision that we made as, as far as the numbers that we have and the metrics that we use and the recommendations by our, our lead nurse who's, who's doing COVID and looking at where we are in the high school. As we said in, in August about in-person learning, we try to get kids in as we possibly can and stay away from full remote days. I got, I have Bob Rogers in here on this meeting to talk a little bit about athletics and what's going on in the athletic department and our league. So Bob, can you share a little bit about COVID and the Patriot League and athletics at Whitman Hansen?
Uh, sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. All right, terrific. Well, Jeff kind of just outlined a little bit of some of the situations we've had in athletics in terms of the teams that are quarantined. It's been a very, it's been a struggle in the winter. You know, in, in the interest of full disclosure, I will tell you that as the Whitman Hansen Athletic Director and our principal, Dr. Jones, we've advocated to the Patriot League for some time now, for the past several weeks, trying to get them to allow our teams to practice, but not play games and move our seasons to the February twenty-second fall two season. And if not for the boys, but at least for the girls, because the girls, there is no other sport that would conflict with it. I think it's very tough for the kids emotionally to be at practice one day and then get the call, like, you know, the day before your game to say, oh, there's no game. So it's these highs and lows that these students have to deal with, which is, which has been very difficult. Our girls' basketball team, varsity basketball team, we're in just about the middle of January, and they still have not played a game. Their first game was canceled because our opponent was in COVID, and then their next game also because of that situation, and then they had a COVID situation. Now Silver Lake has just gone complete remote with their teams. Marshfield, Plymouth North, and Situate are also remote with no sports. It has been a big struggle. Unfortunately, we're just one vote in our, in the league, and there is no appetite to move it. So we're soldiering on the best we can to try to keep our kids engaged and involved. And I, you know, I had a meeting with all the coaches the other day talking about this is a great opportunity to learn about how to deal with adversity. You know, yeah, I, I think that, you know, if we can give the kids an understanding of, you know, the appreciation of having what you have because it does get taken away. I think a lot of kids have grown from that, you know, speaking as, for, for, as a coach. That's been a big theme with our, our basketball team. We've only had three varsity sporting events. So boys' basketball has played one, boys' hockey has played one, and girls' hockey has played one, and that's it. And we're in the middle of January, so it's, it's been difficult. The good news is Whitman Hansen is undefeated. We haven't lost a game in history. So I guess that's pretty good. But, you know, the bottom line is the kids are able to be together every day. That's what I was advocating for with our league is, you know, let the team still practice and, and not play the games yet and move it to February twenty-second. That's not going to happen. We're just going to do the best we can at this point. We are back in practicing today. It was the first day the teams practiced again. And I would just say, anybody that's watching at home, if you're trying to keep up to date with what we're doing, you can go to the MIAA app. That's the most up-to-date place to get game information. All of our varsity games are being streamed live. We are not allowing fans other than the parents. So if you want to see any of our teams in action, you can go to that, and I also always put it on Twitter when our teams are playing. Jeff, I didn't tell you that I was going to ask you to do this, although I did mention it briefly in my office today. One of the things that has come up, when I addressed this committee earlier, I told you that we would be in what we would call the Patriot League bubble. And I'm still a big advocate of the Patriot League bubble, and that's going to be my goal with Whitman Hansen Athletics. I don't anticipate that we'll play outside the bubble. However, there are some teams in our league that, because there were so many teams shut down, for example, eight out of our twelve girls' hockey teams, eight out of our boys', eight out of our twelve of the boys' hockey teams were quarantined and not playing as of a couple of days ago. Girls' hockey, there were only four teams that were still playing. So today at the Athletic Directors Meeting, they did vote that it will always be a priority for teams to try to get their opponents within the Patriot League. However, if they exhaust all of those options and they cannot get an opponent in the Patriot League in a timely fashion, like, you know, they don't want to go a week without playing a game, that they wouldn't have the ability to put it to a vote of the Athletic Director, so we can either approve it or disapprove it. And the teams that they would go outside would be local teams like Norwell or Rockland or Abington or something like that, if that should be the case. I don't anticipate it for us because I just, I am not in favor of that for us playing out. But I wanted you to know because, you know, you might see that one of our, I told you that we're in a bubble, and you might see Hingham playing Norwell and say, well, Bob said it was a Patriot League bubble. We're still going to try. I'm hoping that that doesn't happen, but there might be a time that that happens. I don't know if you don't need, I don't think you even need to vote on that, but just, I think it's an acknowledgement, just so you know it's not, not a full bubble like we had originally had. And that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it. It's been a, it's been a tough winter, but, um, the good news is that once we get to the, to the spring, I had a meeting today about the spring, and we're hoping for business as usual in the spring. State tournament and all that, we're hoping the MIAA approves that.
Anyone have any questions from Mr. Rogers?
Dan does.
Dan.
Yeah. Bob, do we do any testing, COVID testing for these players?
No, right now Jeff can probably, is probably going to be addressing that coming up. There was a, a meeting yesterday regarding how testing goes. We do, here's what we do in the athletic department. If a kid, a student has any symptoms at all, you know, they say, hey, I have, you know, sore throat, runny nose, whatever, I, we contact Lisa Tobin, she contacts the parents, and we get them tested in that scenario when they are symptomatic. Another thing that Whitman Hansen has done, and I wish that all the schools in our league would do this. I think Ducksbury is doing, doing this, but some are not, and that is if we have one positive case on a team, we shut the team down, and that's what's happened to girls' JV basketball and varsity basketball. So if there's a positive case, we, we allow the team to then go get tested, the team, the team members can get tested. They could be back easily within the ten-day timeframe. But some schools are not doing that. Some schools are just isolating the player that tested positive. I'm, it was a topic today at the Athletic Directors Meeting, and I guess we have to agree to disagree with the way that someone operate. We, what we ended the meeting with today was they will at least notify us if they've done that. And I think that what we would do as Whitman Hansen, if there was a school that abide by the, by that protocol, we probably would just elect not to play them because I, I think that that's the best practice. If there's a positive case, what some people get confused about is the close contact, the close contact. Just because somebody was a close contact, that person would be quarantined, but the whole team wouldn't be quarantined. But if a player was positive on a team, then that whole team would be quarantined until they went through the protocol that Lisa Tobin, who's done a terrific job and has been a great resource to us. I mean, I don't know how she's doing it, but she, we send the information to her and she contacts the parents, and it's, it's worked really well.
Thank Bob. Anyone else?
No, shut up.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bob. So Bob alluded a little bit to, to testing. So I'm sure you, if you watched the governor's press conference last Friday, he spoke to something called pool testing. That was news to us on our side of the table. We had a nice conference call with the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, on Thursday, and he did not mention to superintendents that there was a rollout of pool testing on Friday. So over the weekend, we scrambled a little bit to find out what pool testing was. And George, Lisa Tobin and I spent an hour and a half on a webinar yesterday with Desi, and they were explaining what pool testing is all about. It, it's taking a sample of a building or a few buildings of teachers and staff and considering them a pool. They would be tested, say, on a Tuesday, and their results would come back on a Thursday. If all folks in that pool were negative, they're negative. If someone in that pool came back positive, we would have to give them a Bionex antigen test, which we currently do not have, and see who is positive via that antigen test. It gives us an idea potentially of a small cluster of folks. That's not a bad idea, although it comes with some, some real questions that I have and that Lisa has. One, it's a, it's a process that you might need a small team or almost a small army to put together to track your data, to get your sign-offs from your parents, to get somebody to courier these tests to the facility, and then, and then actually figure out the process. I don't know if it's something we are going to move forward with. I am going to fill out the survey for more information from the state. However, there's another option out there. Knowing that we haven't had a tremendous amount of transmission within our student body, but we've had some issues where we've had to send staff home and quarantine or, or wait for a PCR test. Chief Brenner contacted me the other day and said that he had purchased testing kits, rapid, rapid testing kits for Whitman employees. And I asked him what company he went through, and we are probably going to move forward and buy some rapid testing kits for staff, district staff only. So if someone comes to school or if someone is symptomatic, they can do a rapid with Lisa Tobin, and then we can find out if they're actually positive or negative, or if they just have a cold or other symptoms of something else. But not necessarily have to send them home for a ten-day quarantine or wait the outcomes of a, of a PCR test if they can actually get one. This will come at a cost. However, we do have money in, in ESAR, ESAR II, and still in the CARES Act that we can, we can appropriate for. So I'm going to get costs. Chief sent me a link to that, yesterday to the company that, that he used, and that's probably what we're going to do. We also are going to look at the, the pool testing for the state. But based on the conference call we had yesterday, the, the areas that this has been successful, and they've been doing it since September, have been bigger cities, the city of Salem, the city of Watertown, and the city of Malden. I'm concerned because we have such small. I'm concerned because we have such small, we have, we have, our two towns combined are not as big as Watertown. And that pool would only be in either one school or one town. So I don't know if we're gonna get an accurate account or data that will help us other than where we are. And the other major concern that Lisa had, and our parents have been doing an outstanding job so far of watching their kids, if their kids have any symptoms at all, they're keeping them home. What I don't want to do or what we don't want to do is say, hey, look, there might be a test here for you to come to school and test. You might be part of a pool. Go to school if you have, if you have symptoms and they'll take care of you. Our parents have been doing an awesome job of contacting the school and saying, my son has this. We're gonna get him tested, we'll keep him home and it's worked out relatively well. The staffing piece has been the issue for us because we've had to quarantine folks who have been asymptomatic but close contacts of either relatives, their own, their own families or through close contacts of other, of other things. So more to come on this as I get more information from the state. But I'm just letting the committee know we are probably gonna move forward if the cost fits and what, it depends on the service delivery of the rapid tests. We're gonna bring in rapid tests for our staff. Bob, Chris Gibbon had a question.
Chris? You have to unmute, there you go.
Yep, thanks, Bob. Um, yeah, so Jeff, you just answered my question. I might have missed it initially. I was curious to know if these tests were just for staff or for staff and students? And I think I just heard you say for staffs, staff only, correct?
Staff only, correct at this point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn?
Thanks. Um, Jeff, I was reading the memo also from Commissioner Riley and I just wanted to clarify, thank you for filling out the survey. You mentioned you are still gonna go forward with that. Um, because I know it does indicate that DESI will cover the cost for the first six weeks of pool testing if the district decides to go forward with that. Uh, but it doesn't say in the memo either that, and I think Mr. Scribbitt just answered it, is pool testing for students, right, and staff?
And staff, correct.
Okay.
The only thing, the, the cost that he's gonna cover are the, is the actual tests. They're not gonna cover the staffing. And in that memo, if you read that memo, he said you can absorb that with existing staff. I've got Lisa straight out 24/7 right now and my nurses are pretty busy. So I am concerned about bringing other folks on and then absorbing the cost of the testing after the six weeks.
Right, okay, I understand. So manpower is an issue in order to distribute the pooling tests that would be free, the tests themselves. But if you um, are saying that you may have access to rapid tests that the staff would have access to, then I think that may be a good alternative. I would just like to know that our staff, um, at least our staff will have access to testing as soon as possible. So I think that's my um, not, more or less my comment, right? If we have two options here, which is the best option um, to get our staff access to that?
Here's what you think.
Okay.
Who, did you have a question?
I've got Fred, then Hillary.
Sorry, fair enough.
The uh, rapid tests uh, that uh, you and the chief had spoken of, do we know what the accuracy rating is of them? In other words, we, would you still need to do the regular, you know, wait two or three-day test afterwards?
Not according to the chief and not according to Lisa. The rapids are 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 good to go for us.
Okay, and if we're in a pool and one of the pools does come back with a positive, then would we be doing the rapid or would we be doing the regular type of testing? And would DESI still be enduring the cost of testing, you know, perhaps 100 people, 200 people?
So, so Fred, yeah, I don't know what the pool is gonna be. That's gonna be selected by that, that company. Uh, we use the number on our webinar of 10. Um, but it doesn't go to a a PCR or a rapid. It goes to an antigen test that we would have to, and DESI did not say if that was free or not. Um, there was a pilot that 100 districts were involved in the antigen. Uh, we chose none because again, the, the fear of giving students the opportunity to come to school with symptoms to be tested outweighs where, it helped us in our decision. We want to keep kids home if they're symptomatic. So if you tested, one person in the pool tested positive, we would use the Bionex uh, antigen test. If someone in, and and what they said, if someone in that uh, then, then you would see who tested positive with that antigen test. The other scenario that they said was, if for some reason that pool, nobody tested, somebody tested positive in the pool and nobody tested positive with the antigen, then we would have to send the entire pool to a PCR. And DESI did not say if they were gonna cover the cost of that or not, or if that was up to the parent.
Thank you.
Then Fred, Hillary?
It was a well-done webinar. However, there, there's just a lot of unanswered questions and as it was delivered Friday afternoon as here, DESI's gonna provide this to you for free. We all know nothing comes free, there's a catch to it. And the catch is the staffing piece of it and the, and the six weeks, you know, the after six weeks, you'd be involved in something else.
Hillary, thanks, Jeff, then Dan.
I just, can you guys hear me okay? Everyone can hear me, okay. Um, so I guess I have a couple of things. Um, I think that everyone can agree that if we test staff or test more students, then we have bet more answers and then we can get people back into buildings, right? Um, so I guess my question, Jeff, or to the committee would be, I don't know, and maybe this is a broader uh, scope to all committees across the Commonwealth. You know, if you look at the communities that are giving testing to their students and their staff, it's another case, as everything is in this uh, world of remote learning of the haves against the have-nots, right? So I heard that the six-week buy-in and then it's gonna, it costs roughly $20,000 a week after that to do the pool testing. I, I don't know districts that can afford that. I mean, I do, but I don't, I don't know many. Um, and I just wonder if there's an action or something that we as school committees across the Commonwealth should do to Commissioner of Education or to the governor. Um, you know, I think that testing is important and it shouldn't be a, you can pay for it so you can get it. Um, this is public education that we're talking about and, you know, it's supposed to be for all, equal access for all. And this is just another example of how it's not going to be. Um, and I just wonder if there's something that we can do to sort of, um, I don't know, get the ball rolling on that or something. That's all.
Jeff, and then Dan.
So I'm not sure, Hillary, I mean, we could draft a letter from this committee to, to the commissioner, to the governor, to DPH, because they all seem to be working together uh, about, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. If you can afford, uh, I, I know family members who have been able to get the rapid test because they have cash on hand when they wanted to travel. And I know people have waited in hours for a free test at, at Massasoia. So if, if you want us to create something on behalf of the committee, I can send it out and Bob can sign it out on behalf of the chair. You all have an opportunity to see it. But just about making sure there's equal access, you know, cost-wise. When you mentioned the cost, there is gonna be some money in the next stimulus package from the Fed that already DESI is spending our money for this. This is one of the things they said, you can, you can spend your ESER 2 money for that. But there might be things that we as a committee or we as a central office say, I would rather spend that ESER 2 money on kids who were regressing from this year and put in some, some, some stop gaps for that. And also spend it on testing of our staff so they can come in and make sure that they're here teaching classes. So that was the piece of, of, of the DESI webinar was, there are ESER money, there is ESER money coming in, so you can spend that. I did not know it was a $20,000 a week pop after six weeks. That's news to me. That's a pretty steep uh, steep cost for something that's not gonna give you specifics other than just a random sampling of, of your district or of your school. So thank you.
We'll look into that, Dan.
Yeah, Jeff, um, my question's more towards the second part of this COVID, the vaccine. Do we have it set up yet for how, when, how and when the teachers and staff get their vaccination, they gotta do it in schools? Or do they have to report to like the individual town, fire department or somewhere else?
So, so Dan, I brought my crystal ball right now. I'm gonna shake it up a little bit and see what falls out because there's been nothing from the state as far as our teachers. Uh, I got, you know, if you listen to the CDC and you listen from, from Washington, teachers were gonna be moved up into the first responder piece. Uh, it doesn't look like that. The word that I got on the street, and it was the original, the vaccine should be available for our teachers K to 12 and, and, and beyond between early February to the end of March. So dose one and dose two should come between February and March. So if, if, if the ball goes right, everything rolls our way, that all of our teachers will have had the opportunity to have the vaccination. As far as the rollout, I don't know. One of the things we are bandering around about that, if we are rolling out a vaccine for staff and it's not in our buildings, if it's at the town hall or something like that, it's gonna have to take place after school hours because teachers teach until 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon or it's gonna have to take place on the weekends. And that's gonna be a lot of teachers in the Commonwealth going to their local lefties. It's not the, not just the first responders in the community. I have 500-plus employees that work within our district and that doesn't necessarily include my, the, the people that work for the bus company, that work for SJ Services, that work within the schools. So I'm waiting to hear from the department. I think they wanted to get first responders done. I know that they're, they're now moving, at least in the, in the, in the, the recommendation from CDC is moving everybody 65-plus into the first category. Governor Baker said he's not doing that. I believe I heard that today. He's sticking with what we're doing. I'm listening to his press conferences daily to find out little, little nuggets of information, what we can share. But right now, as of 6:30 on, on Wednesday, we have no information as far as how we're rolling out the vaccine. I do know my school nurses have volunteered with Chief Brenner and Chief Thompson to help them administer vaccines, whatever. Um, they're gonna have to be, it depends on the vaccine, it depends on the dose, it depends on the data. All I told George yesterday is we're gonna have to make sure every one of our teachers has an ID that labels them as a Whitman Hanson educator or part of our district so they can have access to the vaccine. Because I'm sure people are gonna wanna double check to make sure you have legitimate employees trying to get this vaccine. So long story short, I have really no information and we're, if I get it, I will share it with our, our staff first. Kevin and I talk almost daily. Uh, as soon as we get information, we'll roll it out and make sure that our teachers are at the, at the front lines. I, I do, do hear that our school nurses have moved up into first responder uh, level. So they are able to get the vaccine because they're coming in contact with more people that have symptoms than anybody else. So school nurses are supposed to be i- i- in the queue. Uh, Chief Brenner told us that he would help us out uh, when they were finally given the go-ahead.
Jeff, I'm like, the way the news is being disseminated out there, it's like New England changes daily with the weather. So just curious on how we're gonna handle it, thanks.
Jeff, I believe I saw today that they were um, vaccinating firefighters at Whitman Fire Station.
Yep, I did see that as well. And I, I get, I, I wanna shout out while we're talking the vaccine, the chief, the both chiefs, both boards of health have been outstanding. Um, they've been overwhelmed, at least at both boards of health, uh, and they still maintain contact with Lisa Tobin every day. I feel we have one of the best processes around um, with, with uh, contact tracing and working with our boards of health. It's been outstanding. I can't, I can't say that enough. And then, then both chiefs also talking to us about the vaccine and working with us to make sure we get our employees vaccinated as soon as possible, as soon as we possibly can.
Anyone else? Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Okay. I'm still moving on with COVID. So as, as you all know, uh, right after, after the holiday, around New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, the state rolled out the timeout learning charts, uh, identifying districts who naughty list. I told you we were not on the naughty list. Uh, but I will read you, because this has come into question within the district. I will read you what the state sent us. And, and this is where we have some issues with reporting in the press. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about why people are misinterpreting where we're at. So on December 10th, based on the data submitted in November on the student learning time SLT survey, Whitman Hanson is preliminarily cleared to meet the new SLT standards set by DESI. Per these standards, remote districts must provide an average of at least 40 hours of synchronous instruction. That's live instruction over two academic weeks and have no fully asynchronous days in their schedule. Hybrid districts must provide an average of at least 35 hours of live instruction over two academic weeks. That's us. And blend districts, some combination of in-person, hybrid and remote at various grade levels must meet the regulation that corresponds with each grade level's instructional model. That's not us. Live instruction is defined as the sum of in-person and remote synchronous instruction. Please see below for additional information related to the data submitted in your November SLT response. As a reminder, this data reflects your instructional model and schedule of the week as of November 2nd, 2020. Blank data indicates no survey response. While this report indicates preliminary clearance determination based on the four grades collected in the SLT survey, districts are responsible for ensuring that the SLT requirements are met across all grades for, served for the uh, appropriate instructional model. So our preliminary status is cleared, our preliminary reason is not applicable cleared and hybrid additional minutes needed per day over two weeks is zero. That's the document I have from DESI. Additional detail, they surveyed four grades. Grades one, grades four, grades seven and grades 10. Grade one, we have 33 hours of instruction over two weeks. Grade four, we have 33 hours over two weeks. Grade one, we have 32 hours over two weeks. Grade 10, we have 47 hours over two weeks. Our average over those two weeks is 36. This is why DESI cleared us. However, and we do not, DESI also sent out that by January 19th, districts that were not cleared had to have a model of improvement. Outside of that, we are working on a model of improvement to make sure grades one, four and seven hit the 35 hours of asynchronous, of synchronous learning over two weeks. We're working with the association to make sure that happens. And I'll tell you that briefly, there is nothing set in stone in our MOU and it hasn't been rolled out yet. But we're looking at adding hours on Wednesday to the elementaries, an hour a week to hit our 35. And we're looking at either adding hours on Wednesday to middle school or potentially going live streaming at the middle school. Again, this has not been discussed or bargained with the association. We gave our high school teachers 10 days of professional development around, around moving into live streaming when we went to live streaming at the high school. And one of the reasons we did not live stream at the middle is because we have lack of technology. Chromebooks are not ideal to live stream. We told you at one of the last meetings, we ordered close to 550 laptops for our, excuse me, 390 laptops for our district at a cost of $550,000 covered by CARES to give each of our teachers a laptop in case we had to go fully remote or in case we were in a situation like this again. Those laptops have trickled in since Christmas and right now are being earmarked for the middle school and they're being prepared for the middle school if we do have to go or if that's our choice to go live stream at the middle school. I have a principal's meeting very soon to discuss this and how we are going to meet the 35 hours, even though DESI has cleared us. We wanna make sure we hit our 35 hours to make sure we're equitable across the district. So two options for me is adding hours to the day on our Wednesday, which is our remote day, but adding more synchronous hours or live streaming at the middle once the computers are ready. And it does take a little bit of time just to let the committee know. It's not taking a laptop out of a box and it works. It has to be synced to the, the high school um, uh, information and it has to be synced so we can use it at home. There are just a, a few layers, it has to be tagged, it has to be prepared, it has to be, uh, get, got ready for distribution by technology. George can probably talk about it at length, but just a, a little nugget, it's not something we can just take out of the box and give teachers. We are working with Kevin and sending the association to see what the better model is. But the goal is even though we were cleared by DESI, we are going to try to hit the 35 hours that has been asked of us at all grade levels.
Okay.
Any questions?
Hillary?
I have a question. Jeff, is it an average of grades one, four, seven and 10? Or is it, so you take all those four numbers, you add them up and you divide them by four and if that clears 35, you're fine?
That's correct.
Okay, and then so what you're saying is you want the students to have the equitable time on learning? That's not a directive from DESI necessarily?
Not a directive from DESI. It's, they have asked us to meet that requirement. We have not hit the requirement in an average, but we wanna make sure we hit that 35 hours, even though they've cleared us. We have not hit the requirement in an average, but we want to make sure we hit that thirty-five hours, even though they've cleared us. If that makes sense. The actual, we'd like to get, I'd like to get two more hours of synchronous instruction for elementary. And I'd like to get three more hours of synchronous instruction for middle school, even though Desi said you made S L T according to the average that we've asked you to do over ten days.
Okay. So right, it's a ten day period and within that ten days, you have to average thirty-five hours of synchronous learning for all of your students.
Correct, correct, using the four grades.
Okay.
For high school, because of, if you look at strictly math, because we have forty-seven hours or forty-seven hours in high school, that carries us. It puts us over. So we want to make sure we get our elementary and our middle up. But again, it's not a directive from Desi. It's something we've looked at and we want to improve our synchronous instruction district. But we don't have a target deadline of January nineteenth, like some of the districts did. And I know some of the districts aren't gonna make that because they have to negotiate that with their association. And this data didn't come out till the the second week of December. So it's a short window.
When was the first, that's my other question. When was the first time, I remember it being brought up at our last meeting, but was it even in November, the first time that Commissioner Riley, that they came out with this? Or was it later than that?
We had to fill it, we had to fill out our survey in November. The data came out on December tenth.
So did they give you, did they come up with the hours after they got all the data from the districts?
Correct, correct. Correct. If memory serves, if memory serves, it was the December ninth meeting of the Board of Education where Desi presented their hours. They presented the hours. They made the argument to the Board of Education. The Board of Education took a split vote, but did approve it. So the snapshot was November second. We had to get it in, I think it was by November the eighteenth. And then the Board of Education voted on it to enact it in this early December for a January nineteenth rollout for those districts that did not meet the requirements. What we're trying to do is allay some confusion, missing and help our students to really get what we feel they need.
Thank you.
Mr. Small.
And George, you just uh said what I thought I was hearing. Uh, despite anything Desi says or anybody else says, what we want to ultimately do is do what we feel our students need.
Correct.
That's, you know, to me should be the guiding light, so to speak. And I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes. Um, thank you. Um, Jeff and George, how many laptops have currently come in and how many would you need in total?
So we have a, so we have an order for three hundred and ninety of them. They are Microsoft Surface Laptop Three Business Edition. Uh, our testing proved that those were, one, relatively affordable and, two, uh, it also showed that during sharing of screens, during split screens, during Zoom meetings and things of that nature, that there was not a lag or a crash which happened with Chromebooks. They are all in the process of being delivered. And what we are just doing now is they came in from five different vendors through our main state bid vendor Gov Connection. So we have compiled all of the deliveries. Uh, the gentlemen who work in tech and the women who work in tech are making sure that all the uh pieces came in. They are then inventorying them, putting what's called an asset tag, which means that they're a part of us and we can send them. And then they go to the imaging stage. So we are happy to say that aside from some of the um extra peripherals, the computers are in. The stage that's happening now is to make them part of the Whitman Hansen domain. What makes it a little more confusing is that they will also be used at home and at school. So they have to have the ability of almost a dual domain because you have to be able to pick up the wireless network at your house and log in. And then when it comes into school, they also have to pick up our regular domain servers here. Exacerbated by that fact is that we then will be moving to an online server for more of security anti-spam software, which we don't necessarily do normally when you just login at the school that's kept housed here. All of this can be done. It just takes man hours and some um some different connections, you know, in our server room for people that know a lot more than I do. But the process is there. The process will be rolled out as soon as we can. And we are focusing on the middle schools if that is what we want to do. I'm not the biggest fan, as I told you, of the middle school piece for live streaming because I think at the adolescent age and the ability that it now puts on a parent at home to further watch the six, seven, eighth grade child. However, I understand that if that's what's best and that's what's needed and I have a boss, then that's what we will do and work out and we'll go on from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff?
Okay, one more thing on COVID. Sorry it's so late, but this is, this has been a challenging month for COVID. So so based upon how Desi's been working lately, they kind of, they're changing and modifying rules as we go along, expectations. Um, I sent something out to staff today. I talked to leadership. Um, I'm looking at a potential target date for full return sometime in early spring. This is not, this, I didn't come up with this because the state said this. I said April first. This is not set in stone, but I want to start a plan in case, again, knowing Desi and what's in the best interest for our kids. We have a plan in place when the vaccine has been fully rolled out, when we feel it's safe and I can present that plan to the committee for you to say, Jeff, yeah, this is good. Our kids are safe, our staff is safe. We're gonna move forward to fully reopening. This is in the grassroots stage, but the reason I bring this up to the committee now, as I mentioned at a meeting prior, I have big trailer folds of furniture that has to be moved back into classrooms. The plan would be to roll that out slowly over weekends and over February break to start preparing classrooms if and when we can possibly return to school. This is gonna be a conversation that will be ongoing with the association. There are so many variables to us coming back right now. For instance, the vaccine. For instance, the transportation regulations, I can't put more than twenty-three kids on a bus. For instance, the six foot distance. For instance, for instance, for instance, this is just letting the committee know, this is on my radar. That our team is gonna start a plan that will be transparent to the association, to the teachers and to the committee and to our parents to say, yes, we are gonna look at an eventual return to school in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, if it's safe. We will then start to work on the plan of reopening in September. But first and foremost, and again, as I, as I feel, the Commonwealth, the state, Desi, Board of Ed is gonna say at some point in the near future, folks, what's your plan for return once the vaccine has been offered to all our, all our educators? Because their goal is to get kids back in, so is our our goal. Live instruction with kids in seats in their comfort zone. You heard our student rep today that it's not great. Hybrid is not great. He says fully remote's not great. It's not a great education. It's not a great socialization. There are many, many things that are awesome about what we are doing right now. There are some really good learning things that are happening, our kids are learning. But I would like to get our kids back as soon as we can, as soon as it's safe. That being said, we're not, this doesn't mean when it's it's out in the newspaper tomorrow, when it's on live tonight. April first isn't isn't a date that is set and spelled. I have to come up with a date. Again, Mr. Company asked about the vaccine. What I know now of the vaccine, and that could change tomorrow, is that all educators should have had the opportunity by the end of March to have access to a vaccine. Our highest groups and our senior citizens should have been, have had access to a vaccine by the end of March. So I said to George, let's look for first for a rollout. If it's not April first, it could be the next week, it could be the week after vacation, it could be May first. There's a lot of what ifs in there. A lot of things have to change to make sure we're comfortable. But sharing this with the committee so that you're not, you're not hearing it in March or you're not getting a, I'm not sending you a directive from the state is something I wanted to share with you tonight and just either take questions or comments. But that's, we will be working on a reopening plan for this school year um now, now moving forward.
Okay, is that the end of the COVID?
Oh, Chris Howard has a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, I know I'm running over. So Jeff, I just, I think, I I knew you were gonna kind of go here, so I held off on the vaccine, vaccination discussion. Um, but I think um, I think the key words of what you're talking about, which you said a few times, but I completely agree with is it does need to be safe. And, you know, you can all follow the vaccine vaccination reports. There's a dashboard, they just started pushing them out. They come out every Thursday, for those of you that haven't seen it. So there's a hundred and fifty thousand that have been disseminated across the state, two percent, roughly two percent of the population. Uh, they have enough distributed or shipped for two percent of the population. So I think we're really gonna have to watch that because I think the timelines we continue to get may be a little um overly ambitious in terms of when they're gonna arrive. So, you know, I think we can watch that and we can see what's happening, but I I I'm reluctant to believe that those vaccines are gonna be shipped as fast and administered as fast. And that's, we just seem to be going, falling a little behind. So um, I think if we watch that, great. I think it's always good to have a plan. But uh, the last thing, and I know you didn't say this, I'd want to do is we're just gonna, we're gonna rush through and and put people back in school, even though nothing's changed, right? So as far doing it right, let's, let's keep doing it. Um, to the extent we get some pressure from Desi that, you know, they want people in school, they gotta, the state has to, the state has to honor their end of the bargain, which is to get the vaccines out and administered. And until they do that, I think we're tied in the same place.
Thanks, Chris. Fred, then Dawn.
Uh, and Jeff, I think it's a very wise idea to put a plan together. A plan can be put into a three-ring binder and it can stay on the shelf until needed. Uh, but to think about what the logistics are, uh, what the uh obstacles to overcome are and make sure that we have everything so that when the green light does happen, we can open up the book and say, yes, this is all still applicable perfectly. Or let's adjust this part of this page, et cetera. So I, I think it's a wise idea to come up with that type of plan. You know, as far as having an April first date, I would consider that just to have a date to have a, try and have a plan ready. Uh, I don't know that it'd be feasible to be saying we're going back to buildings at that point. And I don't think we should even think about, you know, at this time, uh, going back to buildings. But to uh have a plan on what it's going to take to get back in when the time is right, I think it's the proper thing to do.
Thanks, Fred. Dawn?
I agree. I'm glad that we're having a discussion about a plan and forward thinking. Certainly, the vaccine is something to watch. I'm thinking also about the six-foot social distance. So that was a discussion previously, you know, the recommend, we're adhering to that. And we didn't want to reduce that to the three foot and and go with that confusion. So I wonder if part of our plan might be to wait for any type of guidance that rolls that or dials that back, right? Where six feet is no longer required at supermarkets and out at the stores and so forth. So any um feeling on that, Jeff?
So, so, yeah, we get mixed messages from the state. Uh, the commissioner has said all along, three foot, three feet is acceptable. I appreciate this committee taking the safer route. I really do. And I believe, I I can speak for the teachers that they, this committee has always looked for their safety and the safety of our students first and foremost. Some of my colleagues around the South Shore have already put plans in place with a return date of February first. Uh, and they're having to backtrack on those dates because their committees have asked them to do that. And their committees have supported that rollout. I've had the highest number of people in quarantine over the last seven days. So so three weeks from now, to say we're gonna bring people back is kind of challenging. So I appreciate that. So the six-foot thing, again, as information comes out about the vaccine, as things change and and as numbers start to dwindle, I think we can start to look at it more realistically. But I would be missing my job if I didn't share that we need to start heading. And again, part of it is for the best, for our students to get them back in. I think that would be the most appropriate when it's safe. But also, we're gonna be asked for this at some point. And what I want to have is a thought out plan that the school committee's been involved in from from the, from the beginning so that not like in August, when I'm bringing three different plans on you that we worked on for a month of re-entering school. I think that the more opportunity we can get some information from some parents, we will send out a survey because one of my major concerns is if we do come back full, our remote plan for our high school kids goes out the window. We will not be able to live stream fully remote students with twenty-two or twenty-three kids in a classroom. It's gonna be a challenge. And I will have some parents that I know who will want to stay fully remote or move from hybrid to remote because they don't want to put their students in a setting. So all of this information has to be gathered over time. Those are the variables, again, that I say are are kind of wide that I, that we have to get the information. But we have to get the information so we can put together a thoughtful plan for re-entry that works for our teachers and works for our parents and works for our kids. And who knows, some of our parents might not say, you know, no, we don't even want to think about going back full this year. We just want to stay in hybrid till the end of the year because we've, we've made some, we've made those accommodations. And on others, I have parents that want us in yesterday. So I'm I'm stuck in the middle. I'm just saying this to you that we will, we will be working on this over the next month or two so that we can roll out something that's thoughtful and the association will be hand in hand with us. So they have feedback and they can provide information and 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 their opinion in this as well.
Jeff, thank you very much for all the information. We're glad that you're thinking about it and putting a plan together. And I hate to say we have to move on and sound like a teacher. But you're getting detention. I gave you ten minutes for this COVID report and it's been faulty. It's been very informative and and I'm kidding with you. It's been very informative and I know we need to do it. Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, the superintendent is going to give us the information as it rolls out because things are changing weekly as we get these reports and vaccines becoming available to all people. So thank you very much, Jeff.
Thanks, Bob. So next on my list on my agenda is the strategic plan. Uh, we presented this a few times. We've tried to do a few revisions. And in your package, we have the strategic plan. Uh, and basically what we changed on this is we put outcomes for this year. The challenge in the strategic plan that I have in my hand right now, that you have, is that things are gonna change in September too, and some of our outcomes are gonna change based upon our return to school. Yes, George, you passed, didn't interrupt. So um, so I just wanted to, this is something that has has been there. It was actually finished with our internal team the week on March eleventh. If you all remember, we went out on March thirteenth. One of the things we've done is we've adapted, we've changed, we've tried to bring it up to date since the time we presented it to you. Uh, Chris Howard said the last time we presented it to you, he said, I just want to make sure that we're actually doing something in this report and it's not more of a global or macro look. And that's where we put the outcomes. We've changed the outcomes to more of a calendar setting to say what can feasibly be done, what can realistically be done within the concept of a year that is data-driven and that can be recorded and can be laid out for everyone to see. And then what we would do next year is take that calendar approach again. You see a document that is running from twenty to twenty-three. That also does provide some flexibility in the era of COVID and things we're at now is that at that time of twenty-three, that can be the calendar ending or that could be the school year ending. The reason why we're trying to do it that way is because there's been so much change in public education this whole time. So the outcomes have been listed. They are tied to our pillars and our hallmarks. And what we're asking is if we could get the the blessing and a vote from the school committee so that it can be done and it can be acted on. And then every year, or and whatever the committee wants, we would then give you the update on the outcomes because those are the pieces or steps that are tangible that you can see that would show a result.
I entertain a motion to accept the document that you have either electronically or paper as written. And then we go into discussion on it.
I'll make a motion to accept the um strategic plan.
Second, Mr. Boyce.
It was motioned by Dan Colady, Michelle, and it was second by Mr. Boyce. Questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Go ahead, move into discussion, Jeff.
Okay. Discussion?
Dawn?
Dawn. Um.
Then Chris. Go ahead, Dawn.
Thank you. Um, this is an important document because it is the roadmap to where our district is going. And it's certainly gonna lead into our budget, which is important in the next meeting. Because essentially, the budget should align with our strategic plan. I I think my most important question is that the previous strategic plan included an outcome. And I know that was originally written by Dr. Whitner. One of the outcomes was universal full-day kindergarten. And I don't see that as written in the strategic plan as an outcome. So I'd like to ask um what the rationale was behind removing that.
Uh, sure. I I think that's, that's something that's been looked at for twenty-three years that has been unsuccessful. Uh, we thought in this time of COVID that one of the tangible pieces that we can do within a year, what we What we changed from the previous pieces of strategic plan that we had was that that, those outcomes were for the whole entire plan. What we're trying to do is to say what is tangible, what is doable, what can we move forward on? The, the feeling, and it's probably not the feeling of everybody, but the feeling was that at this point in time, we're trying to be tangible with what we think we can do this year, given all of the things that have taken place. Because it's still in the plan, it's not in the outcome.
Are you saying Full Day K is in the plan?
I believe it's in the... I believe, unless I'm wrong, I believe it's still in the plan. I'd have to find it. Looking for it, Dawn. It's something we could probably put under a street fund or strategic initiatives.
Okay. And you're right, I didn't realize that at the bottom of page two, it says outcomes for 2021. So you're indicating that the outcomes are the priority for, and that would be this year, essentially, right, FY21?
Correct.
Okay. And then we would revisit this for each fiscal year with new outcomes or priorities?
We have to do that in the summer, correct.
Okay, okay. Just trying to get a handle on it.
Chris?
I'm sorry, just one more follow-up.
Okay, go ahead, Dawn.
If, I don't see that full-day kindergarten is, is written in here at all, and if that, I, I understand that that was Superintendent, your explanation earlier that it wouldn't be new programs going forward, but I would like to see it included.
That was my mistake. You are correct, it was there, it just got omitted. The call was omitted, yeah. I mean, now, in one of our initiatives, we have, we established middle school foreign language and reading support program. That's a global initiative. The Full Day K was just omitted, the box was omitted. So we'll take care of that. Not a big deal, a big deal, but it will be included there.
Okay, yeah. I would like to see us just start to evaluate that even this year if we can to talk about the revolving fund that we have, the tuition we collect, what the expenses are, and, and look at, you know, the overall costs and start to talk about that rather than just sort of table it and say, well, we can't implement it this year, so it's, it's not a discussion that we're having. That's something I wish that we could continue to include and, and talk about, you know, when can it be possible that we no longer need to charge our families this, you know, tuition of $3,200? Is it possible to do some type of phase-in where we, you know, slowly add a little bit into the budget and reduce that tuition over three years? That's something that could be talked about. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, so thanks, George, for what you captured earlier. So when I look at the plan, right, I love how you've kind of layered this top-down. And so like the hallmark of success and the strategic objectives to me make all the sense in the world. And then, yes, I see what you're doing at the end. I think what I said previously and kind of say the same thing now is, you know, find, it sounds like maybe you've gotten there, but find the handful of things that you feel good about doing and do those. I think when I look at, for example, like all those strategic initiatives, to me, that's where sometimes it can get a little tough. I think sometimes maybe you feel the pressure or we even put the pressure on you of, hey, let's, let's get a list of 33 things here. And then we get to the end of the air, we did like seven, and we're like, well, why did we only do seven? Well, like you said, the plan you built didn't presume a pandemic or the world would change as much as it did, and it, and it always does. So I think having a framework is good and, and understanding what are the key pieces, those strategic objectives. But I think as long as you guys are, how I feel, as long as you are both communicating with, this is what we're doing and this is how it aligns, and this is where we need to have a conversation, to me, I'm always going to be good. I prefer that than having three pages of laundry list to do tactical items. I, I just don't think that that's, again, I think that's where you guys need to manage.
I agree.
So I, so I think it's a good document. My only caution is the strategic initiatives are there, but I don't want to fall into the trap of having you both feel, or Jeff, you specifically feel like you have to have a list of 32 items.
Well, I definitely agree and I appreciate that because it's funny because in everything we've done since we've gotten to this point, it's we've taken the macro, tried to make it a micro, and sometimes it's still macro but not as big as it once was. So I completely agree that, that we'll work on what is doable and attainable and have an open and honest conversation as to how and why and go from there.
Hey, what else before I move through the vote?
Chair.
Chair Hayes.
Fred, Dawn, Fred then Dawn.
The other thing, I, just to hop on this a little bit, become 5A engagement with the towns. When we're looking at bringing, bringing back programs and supplementing our budget to bring a program such as Full Day K, et cetera, I think a very good open and honest discussion with the towns as far as how to obtain the funding for that, whether we try and have an increase in our operating assessment or it goes outside our operating assessment, but it goes on an override question, and it's up to the taxpayers to decide. I would think a lot of hand-holding and working real close with both towns in order to obtain, you know, the desired outcome, you know, would be the best way to, to be able to, you know, proceed.
I completely agree. And the reason why we wanted to highlight the engagement to the towns and the flowchart aspect is because sometimes there's a, I'm going to put this in an I statement, it's not Jeff Simonak, it's George Farrow. Sometimes I feel that we step in landmines that we're not sure of and we don't mean to because we're not sure if what's said to who or to how it's said or to where muddies the waters. So I think, Fred, exactly what you say is proper, is that we need to do those things. We need to develop the, we need to develop the, the plan that says, if I talk to this person, it's okay because we decided somewhere that that's the person I should be talking to. And I, and I want to try to avoid those landmines sometimes so that we can always do what's best for kids and what's best for towns and schools. But that's an I statement, I don't want to get you.
Thanks. Dawn, you had another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up that I, if I, I'd like to see the Full Day Kindergarten Initiative added to this, if that is the intent of Superintendent and that it was just omitted in error.
I mean, I can put it in, send it to you, I get to the office at 6:45, I can send it all through by 7:00 AM.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to table the approval of this until we see a document that has that included.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Mr. Fourth.
Okay, David, thank you. I'm just, I'm trying to do this because Michelle, the motion was made by Dawn, Michelle, and seconded by David. Discussion?
Thank you.
How do, point of order, how do we have a motion on a motion? Was it a motion to amend or a motion to table?
Can't have the motion be taken down. You have to amend it.
The motion was to amend.
Well, I made a motion to ta, table. I made a motion.
We already had a vote, right? We had a motion to vote the plan as presented, correct?
Well, Dawn, I'm sorry, you made a motion to table it?
I did.
That was your motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. And, and David seconded it. We had a motion to accept as written. You can motion to amend it or actually...
Okay, I'll motion, I'll make a motion to amend it to include...
Before you do that, David, would you take away your second?
Yep, no problem. I retract my second.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Dawn.
I'll make a motion to amend the strategic plan of 2020 to 2023 to include... I'm just reading this, an outcome of instruction to include universal full-day kindergarten.
Second.
That was made by Dawn and seconded by David, correct?
Yep.
Did you get, Michelle, you got that? Okay. Are we ready, any discussion? We can vote on the amendments?
Discussion. Chair?
I have a question, Chair.
Hillary, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Small went first.
David? You can go ahead and ask your question. No, no, go.
Go ahead.
Me?
Yes.
Hillary.
Okay, I guess I'm confused because I thought that this, on the document, it says this is for the 2020, 2021, right? So I guess...
20 to 2023, top left-hand corner.
But it says outcomes for 2021. So I guess my question, Dawn, is you, are we, are you looking to amend the outcomes? Where are you looking to put Full Day K in, I guess?
I think, I think the mistake was that under, I think the mistake was under the strategic initiative of number, hallmark number two. I should have included, and when I just went to my past versions, 2.4 was what I had is utilize student data to evaluate and adapt curriculum and instructional practices and ensure equity for all students that would include a universal full-day kindergarten program. However, when I was mixing all the boxes and trying to keep all the lines of a word document into a Google sheet that I then shared it with, that line came up. So 2.4 would say utilize student data to evaluate and adapt curriculum and instructional practices and ensure equity for all students to include universal full-day kindergarten.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that we're not adding something that we're not going to get an outcome for, like we're not setting ourselves up for failure right now, right? Because we've already discussed how Full Day K, like moving, we talked a couple of times about how we're not adding new things on right now, you know, pandemic things. So I just want to make sure we're not putting something in that we're going to look at in three months and say, oh, we didn't do that, what, you know, like, that's all I want to make sure of.
Correct. I would view that as something that we're looking to accomplish in this strategic plan. However, it's not going to be an outcome for this school year. This comes...
Okay, I agree. Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Hillary. It wouldn't be an FY21 outcome for certain because we don't have it. Thank you for correcting.
Chair Hayes.
Okay, so go ahead, Fred.
The motion was made to have it placed as an outcome. So I think that motion either needs to be voted on, and in my opinion, voted down, or it needs to be re-amended properly, that it's, you know, contained in line 2.4, you know, to add on, you know, the wording, including universal full-day K as an initiative, not as an outcome.
Okay.
I can withdraw that amendment that I originally...
I'll retract my second.
Okay. Let's not get the waters any muddier. This document that was presented, obviously George just told you kind of what happened to it. I believe that we can vote it as you see it, as Mr. Farrow just added to what was to go in that block and that will stand as a document without making all kinds of amendments and making it dirtier. Byers, it'll muddy the waters. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
But could I, could I make the motion to amend this to include in the strategic objective, objectives of 2.4 to include universal Full Day Kindergarten?
Yes.
All right, with that, Mr. Farrow?
I'll second that.
Yeah, we're good. We're great for Ryan. It's great, we're good.
We're good?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? This is on, we're going to vote on the amendment to the document. Any further discussion? You heard what Dawn said, Mr. Colady.
Can we have a second on...
We had a second.
I'll second it if you need it.
I second it.
Mr. Fourth, I believe, seconded it.
I'm sorry, say that again. I don't think so, not the last one she just made.
Mr. Small will second, Michelle will, if you need a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Colady.
Yes. Don't worry.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Fourth.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Ms. Niffen.
Yes.
All right, let's vote on the document. I'm going to go in the reverse order, that was the amendment. Let's vote on the total document. Any discussion? I had a motion in a second. Ms. Niffen.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Fourth.
Yes.
Bobby Hayes, yes. Mr. Colady.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. That document's been voted.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. Curriculum, moving on to curriculum, George has had an update on our curriculum assessment and MCAS. Sure. So I would just like to bring you up to speed on two different things, including dealing with assessment. One of them is district-related, one of them is state-related. You would notice that you had some paperwork that was requested by a school committee person, which was from, which is the exact report that I spoke of in October about our first interim assessment. That was from grade five, dealing with the first time that we did it. We are now in the middle of our second testing window. Our second testing window will end on January the 15th. Our goal then is to compare internally and then to give you the overview of how did students do from the first time coming back to the midpoint now in January? That'll be tested in both ELA and math. Remembering that the goal, one of our district goals this year is to elongate, elongate that, extrapolate that all the way to the eighth grade. We are using our HMA's, which is our old Mifflin company, and we're also using our iRed. I will be honest with you that we are finding some roadblocks in the HMA system as far as diagnostic. I can speak more to that when we talk about intervention strategies. But what you will see in your packet and what you will see at our next meeting is how are we doing now at the stock gap or the middle of the year in our elementary schools in ELA and math? Remembering that our big picture projection will get... So that's what you have in front of you. The second item on assessment that I'd like to bring to your attention is that without hearing much from the state at all on MCAS, they have now given us some inkling of what that might look like. We reported last month at the high school, they pushed off the high school for their testing, and now that's going to be done later in March. So you, and there might be a point where you have ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, all testing in the various subjects during their given window. That would be your sciences, that would be your ELAs, that would be your math, be your competencies. For the first time now, last week, they said that, and I quote, "They will have an intermittent sampling of tests in grades three to eight for the MCAS." There has been no clarity to say what an intermittent sampling of tests, what that looks like or what that might be. Speculation has been that they would take maybe 20 minutes of a one-hour session, or they might just take an ELA in this grade sample and a math in this grade sample. We are hoping for more clarity on what that is. I'd also like to say that based on what they say about our remote learning students, because we have about 520 of them, we have to decide and we have to get direction on, are they taking it at home? Are they taking it in school? And so what does the technology department need to do to make sure that what they're taking is safe, will take place, and is secure? So there is a lot to come on the state level, and I will be updating this committee again as to the grade-level samples for what's taking place on our second round of interim assessments, hopefully in our school committee meeting in February.
Any questions?
Do you have a magic eight that you can align with Desi's so that maybe we can guess ahead of, ahead of time?
Guess is good. So just a little bit about the high school MCAS, you're looking at grades 10 and 11 taking ELA and math this year. And that's 600 kids, 600 test administrations in a building, we're supposed to only have 600 kids in at a time. So we have to come up with a schedule, or Dr. Jones will work with us, come up with a testing schedule that's maintaining safety and appropriate social distancing because that ELA, if they stick to the same, same timeline, and Hillary knows, as an English teacher, you're giving ELA the sophomore test to our sophomores and juniors this year since we did not have an MCAS last year. Math one day, and then our freshmen will take MCAS in June, which is the biology. So sophomores and juniors will take tests in March and May, and don't forget, AP start the middle of, or the early second week of May, and some of our sophomores are also And some of our sophomores are also in AP testing, and a lot of juniors are in AP testing. So this spring will be assessment central in the Commonwealth if we stick to the, stick to the timeline that we've traditionally been given for MCAS tests. And the sophomore and junior test is still a requirement for graduation. So we will, as information comes, we'll share that with you next month.
Okay. Anyone else?
Chair Hayes, question.
Go ahead, Don.
George, I'm looking at the HMH growth measure reading report, and it's listed by grades. Do you have access to that information by school building as well? Or is this?
We do. That's what you have for the students who took remote, because that's the way we had to pull that. I do. We do. I have to, again, I'm going to put this in a George Pharaoh I statement. I'm not sure if breaking it down by individual grades is the best thing to be shared. And the reason why I say that is this. Since 2003 and four, when I got here, we used to break down MCAS data by grade, by school. And what it led to on the soccer field was one of the main reasons why I coached soccer. So I was on the other sideline because people were able to identify the student T cases. And it becomes a false read because as a middle school principal, I sometimes gave my toughest kids and my most challenging kids, be that academically or socially, to my best teachers. And we play that game of, I want this one, I want that one. So the district, under the years of John McEwen and then through Ruth Whitner, and I, George Pharaoh, am a believer in that, is that we then went to grade level throughout the district. So that we can say, we are moving forward collectively as one, as opposed to the third grade at Indian Head is strong, the second grade at Conley is weak, or any of that nature. I will again do what Jeff says, and you can direct him there. But that is my feeling on it, and that is sort of what I would like to present to preserve the integrity of the staff and in some cases preserve the integrity of the.
Fair enough. I respect that. I think I'm looking at it from a remediation point of view. So I'm not necessarily requesting that it be posted publicly, but you will have access to that in order to provide remediation in the areas of grade level or school district as needed?
Absolutely. What's fascinating about it is that when we go to, and I'm sorry if I'm being, but we don't talk education a lot. If we have the ability now to go strand by strand, grade by grade on the diagnostic. So for example, you might have a third grade student who is deficient in geometry from a first grade standard. So they might not now cover that in third grade. However, we have the ability to remediate with lessons back to first grade. So that when they open up their mind map or when they open up their view or their online learning, they can remediate that skill while they're still learning at their grade level. So when that skill is reinforced or reintroduced at the grade level they're currently at, they would have had the background knowledge provided that they had missed. So it is some exciting things. If you'd ever, I mean, I'm not the guru on it by any means, but if you'd ever like some more talk and we can look at that a little bit, I encourage you to let me know because it is pretty fascinating with the granular nature that we can get to, to help some of our most struggling students.
Thank you.
Before I go to you, Hillary, George, isn't that also why we have layers of administration? Why each building has a principal? So they can make sure that some of that is, can go right in the building?
And it's a good obvious. We have our lead teacher, well, we have obviously the classroom teacher, then we have the lead teacher, then we have the elementary curriculum specialists, and we have assistant principal, principal, and central office. One of the things we're going to be talking about as an initiative for next year is the regression piece that we're seeing. And then how do we attack that from a system so that we can move forward as Whitman Hansen and not move forward and let sometimes, being a former principal, I sometimes did what I wanted to do, and that maybe wasn't necessarily what we should be doing as a district. I know that now, sitting in central office. So we want to make sure that we all march forward collectively for the good of the all. So thank you.
That's what I meant. Hillary.
Um, George first. I just want to say thank you as a ELL, ELA 10th grade teacher. I appreciate talking about how we don't want some teachers to own some students and their test scores and stuff like that. But I think this is a good opportunity too. I don't know if you guys have, but I think this is kind of what you're alluding to with the regression, implementing some sort of vertical teams throughout the schools to look at, you know, in first grades, you know, vertical teams to talk about the regression and how they can move and go backwards and things like that. I think this data is fascinating and awesome, and I'd love to sit down and look at strands because I'm a geek like that too. But it's great and it's good to see too. I think it would be a good thing. I mean, I know we're talking about it now, but I, I was surprised by some of the data because it actually looks like this is going to come across. But like, kids learned. Kids are learning, you know? And I think that that's something that the community needs to see. And I don't know if there's a way, you know, if maybe principals can put some of that out in their Friday letters. I know Gary at Indian Head sends out like a newsletter on Friday afternoons, something like that. Just to, I don't know. I feel like there's a lot of hopelessness and kids aren't learning, kids aren't learning, but they are. And I think that that's an important piece, and I think that this data point is that hard data that, that people need to see, to see that. So that's all.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. And when we get to February, that'll be this year's snapshot. So we did it for March, we did it in October, and now the October to February data is going to be that snapshot that says, in the hybrid virtual, remote, whatever world you're in, this is what it's showing. And, and I think that good, bad, or indifferent, we should share that. So thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Electronally, Michelle sent you the North River Collaborative annual report. It's just for your information. I don't, I'm not going to review it, but the committee needs to see the collaborative annual report. So it's just an FY for you.
Okay.
Any questions at all on that? Okay. John's going to talk a little bit about budget 2021.
So in your packet, you have the standard budget report. To talk a little bit about expenses first, we continue on the same trend we've seen all year, and we're halfway through the year, which I find amazing. But after six months, things are falling into place. And in fact, our spend rate is somewhat less as has been in, in previous months than it was last year. After six months, we have spent or encumbered 56% of our budget. At this point last year, we had spent or encumbered 58.2% of our budget. And so things are mostly looking pretty good. Before the end of the year, I will be coming back to the committee and asking for permission to move some money between line items instead of putting it off till the very end of the year because there's certainly some line items that need to be adjusted. But, but overall, on the expense side, there's nothing that, that makes us crazy with concern.
Questions for John?
Want to go over care stuff? You want to? So talk about the revenue side then. Couple of things happened since our last meeting, and it's really all good news. On the one hand, when we last met, we talked a lot about the budget, the revenue budget for this current year and the fact that we had some holes in it. We knew that in the end, chapter 78 was going to be less than we originally thought it was going to be based on the governor's budget of last January. We knew the transportation aid would be less based really on the fact that we did not spend as much on transportation last year because we were shut down starting in mid-March, as everybody knows. That and frankly, the fact that interest earnings, interest on the, on our bank account was about $5,000 a year, and that's not going to happen either, given what current rates are. So we had these holes and we were really concerned as how this was going to all come together. Now that we have some finalized numbers from the state and some things to work with, we have decided that we can cover those deficits with money out of what is the ESER, the ESER grant. And if you look at some of the original information that first came out from the state, they really were looking at ESER as a supplement to chapter 70. So I think it's consistent with what the state expected as well. So the good news is that, that we are halfway through the year. We don't feel a need to cut budgets because of deficits in our original revenue projections. So that's good news. The other good news has to do with the, with the CARES Act. And I think people may remember that the concern at December meeting was it was scheduled to end on the 7th 30th. And if we did not have delivery of items or beneficial use of services as well as an invoice, that we would not be able to get reimbursed. And we were frankly quite concerned and had made a number of phone calls to vendors saying, if we don't have this in our hands along with the bill, we're going to have to cancel an order. Well, if you followed what happened with the CARES Act towards the end of the year, it was passed in plenty of time, then it wasn't signed by the president, and then it was eventually signed by the president. And so the good news is that the CARES Act continues and was extended. This is the original CARES Act that's running through Plymouth County, and it's running until next December. So some of the items that, that we have ordered, and then we talked just a few minutes ago about the computers, if it had not been extended, we would not be getting those computers because we would not be able to file for reimbursement. So the CARES Act was extended. That is going to cover those expenses. And I did send along what we have so far submitted for reimbursements. $866,000 worth of items we're waiting to get reimbursed on. At this point in time, I've gotten one inquiry from Plymouth County about a question which we resolved. And so we will continue to move forward with, with requesting reimbursement from CARES through our communities of Whitman and Hanson. And once we get the final, the final invoices from this last shipment of computers, we will be following, filing that. Now, the other thing that I will mention is that last month, we talked about the earmarks that had been placed by Senator Brady and Representative Cutler, and would we be actually being, would they be funded? And as it has turned out, they have been funded. It is part of the CARES Act. And so we have until, we have next, we have the rest of this year to be able to spend those funds as well. So on the revenue side of this year's budget, we're not swimming in funds, but it's running pretty much according to plan, and we feel comfortable with that as well.
Questions for John?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So briefly, I'm going to. Am I, am I muted? No, we're not. So briefly, I'm going to describe, so next, in next month, we're going to do our, our budget hearing on the FY22 budget. And as I said to the committee, and I, and I'm glad you, we've talked a little bit about it here, we're, we're going to be really focusing in on regression and, and making sure kids have, we can implement services for kids next year to make sure they can, if they have regress, they can, they can catch up. So that's what you're going to see. You're going to see a similar presentation, but with different data and taking information from some of the suggestions I've gotten from the committee. We are going to roll out the budget. We're going to let you kind of marinate on that budget. And through follow-up meetings, we are going to provide you more and more information to you and the community as where the dollars have gone. But really looking at our requirements for next year for reopening in September before full go, the recommendations of things that we think we would like to put into the budget. And I want to say above 2022 budget supplemental, if the commissioner says, these are some of the programs you need to have, and the, and the big, the big one is, is remote access. So we're going to provide the budget. You will probably get a supplemental and what those costs might be, and that might be fluid. But we're going to stick to regression. We are going to try to implement major new programs because really what we want to do is get a benchmark of where our kids are at when they come back. Remember, my enrollment is down. We have 90 some odd kids in homeschooling. I'm assuming they're going to come back to school. We're going to have a real, we will survey parents as we get into the spring about what their, what their thought process is about coming back to school, whether it be to our program, and what I'm saying, our program will be a traditional school opening, and whether or not students are going to come back from, from homeschooling. Again, homeschooling is very different than what parents chose as the parent remote option. So we will roll out that budget, taking again, some of the flavors and some of the suggestions we've gotten from the committee over the year and through the, through the past couple of months about that budget presentation, and we'll roll that out. Our goal, and this will look a little different, I'm hoping it's in person. Now, we can only have 25 folks in a meeting. We usually have all our department heads, we have our principals there for questions. We are not going to have them there. I would rather have members of our, our town government, select people, FinCom members, the new town administrator, the town administrator from Hanson, so they can ask questions, they can hear firsthand and be part of that open hearing. At follow-up meetings, we will have our department heads and our principals there available for your, for your questions. But doing this in a COVID world, under the restrictions that we have, I would like to present that personally, in person, with folks around the table, you around the table, keeping to the 25 minute maximum persons or people that we can have at a meeting. So that's what you can expect. If you have questions as we go along, feel free to shoot me an email about, or suggestions about the budget.
Any question?
Okay, Bob, just a couple of things. I know this isn't on the agenda, but things have happened over the past week that I feel in the superintendent's report I have to speak to a little. Last Wednesday, there was an issue in Washington DC that was all over the news. I know some of my colleagues public statements about, about what happened in Washington, about this, about that. What we did as a school community is I messaged my principals, and I believe you and the rest of my staff, what the recommendations were from the National Association of School Psychologists. And just a plug for that, our own Dr. Wendy Price, who's on sabbatical this year, is the president of that association to, to give a, a, a word that for teachers to talk to kids about violence and, and what happened. What the teachers did was to try to stay apolitical, so to speak, but talk to the kids and address those, those kids that came in with questions about what happened because it was all over the, any TV station, any YouTube channel, Twitter, Snapchat, TikTok, we were seeing it live. Our teachers took this as an opportunity to have discussion with their kids, non-threatening discussions, but really see where they were at. And I believe every school committee member was on that email and, and received what they had. I also posted it to Facebook. Some folks appreciated it, some folks did not. I'm trying to provide people with, with talking points in our community. That's my role. Things happen in, in the course of our, of, of, of the school, of the school year that we can address and we can't. And we try to provide parents with, with information to help them have conversations with their kids. Politics aside, something happened last Wednesday. We addressed it as we could as a school community with this document. Age appropriate, and, and as far as feedback, I know we had a couple of calls from some parents with some concerns, and they were addressed. But as a whole, I believe our teachers acted professionally because they always do. They have the best interest of our kids and their emotional health at hand. So this is the document used, and, and that's, and that's, I just wanted to share that with the committee.
Chris Scriven.
Thanks, Chair Hayes. I just wanted to make a comment quickly, less than two minutes. As you know, more than 48 hours ago, I asked you to include on today's agenda the district's response to the historic events at the Capitol last week. As I mentioned, I think it is particularly important for our committee to address this as we are a democratically elected group charged with overseeing public education in our community. As we are all aware, public education is one of the fundamental institutions of our democratic society, which requires a fact, requires factual information to function effectively. Given that misinformation has been employed in a violent attempt to undermine our democratic process, I believe it is our responsibility to ensure our district's response is and has been factual and clear. I'd like to remind our committee of our district's mission statement, and I quote, "The Whitman Hansen Regional School District is committed to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship. A high-quality education necessitates factual information. Responsible citizenship necessitates an understanding of and a commitment to facts, our country, and our democratic process, which includes our three equal branches of government. We are living in a time in our country where our citizens and even our elected officials are fearful for themselves and their families if they tell the truth. I believe we ought to recognize this and communicate to our dedicated staff of educators that we support their efforts to be factual in their response to the violent attacks on our democracy at the United States Capitol Building last Wednesday. We have an opportunity to demonstrate a core value of our strategic plan to act as an example to our students and staff in their efforts to engage in a high-quality education and responsible citizenship. I would like to make a motion for our committee to condemn any persons who are found to be involved in the seditious and treasonous actions against our democracy leading up to and on that fateful day, last Wednesday, January 6, 2021."
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Small will second it.
Okay, discussion.
Chris, can you just read that motion again? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Did you hear him, Chris?
Yes, I did. I'm just, I-
I'm sorry.
Cursor here. I would say I would like to make a motion for our committee to condemn any persons who are found to be involved in the seditious and treasonous actions against our democracy leading up to and on that fateful day, last Wednesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
I had a motion, the second yet. Chris, did that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, I just wanna say-
Hillary, go ahead.
Sorry. I, Chris, thank you for that statement. As an educator, I can tell you, and I teach seniors and sophomores, Thursday was a really challenging day for exactly points that Chris spoke to. I don't know what it was like in the Whitman-Hanson community, but I can speak to how it was. I think that a lot of educators are walking on eggshells, for lack of a better term, right? We are trained professionals not to use our biases when we're teaching students. We can't, we're not supposed to teach them how to think. We're supposed to teach them to think, right? Or what to think. And it was a challenging day, and I think I really appreciate your statement and couldn't agree with you anymore.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Fred.
Hillary, I don't think anybody could have said that better. I think it's the role of our educators to make sure that our students are informed, age-appropriate, you know, as to what occurred without forming an opinion or without telling them that they should form an opinion and letting them think for themselves. I couldn't agree with you more, Chris. Thank you for bringing this up. Violence in any way, shape, or form, such as what we all witnessed last week, I don't think has any place to do in our democracy at this time. And it was horrible, horrible to watch. So, you know, thank you, and thank you, Chris, for bringing up this motion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, move to the vote.
Howard.
Sorry.
I'll be super quick, because, super quick.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Completely agree with everything that was set up to this point. The only thing I would add is I think for those that are watching, especially parents, you know, I cringe when, when we're leaving it up to educators to have some of these conversations. I think I would, so if you are listening, I think when things like this happen, it is an opportunity to grab your kids and just have a conversation. I think if we're, as a society, relying on just the folks in the schools to have those conversations, we're missing an opportunity to do that. So hopefully for folks that are listening, you know, you, more importantly than just having some of that, which I completely agree with everything, Fred, Chris, Hillary, just hopefully there's an opportunity to have some of those conversations at home, too.
Anyone else?
The folks that are listening, but the folks that aren't listening.
Yeah.
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Dawn.
Thanks. I do want to follow up. Because this may not be the last situation that comes like this, and I know we talked a little bit before with the resolutions, too, with MASC, so I don't know if this completely ties together. So I'm sorry, Mr. Scriven, if I'm sort of hijacking onto this, but I want to ask as a follow-up to professional development to support our teachers in that time. And Jeff, I don't know if you have any update on contacting Dr. Kalise Barnum with the professional development, working with the committee or the teachers on cultural proficiency and implicit bias and so forth. We can vote on this motion and comment afterwards.
Can you vote on the motion, and we will brief comment on that?
Thank you.
Okay. Hillary. Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Forth.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Colady.
Yes.
Unanimous, okay, thank you.
Okay, so before we begin, Dawn, George is gonna speak to the PD piece. So we've talked about equity to diversity and inclusion. It's one of our goals. It's on our Excel topic for the year. On February the third, which is our next professional development half-day, it was mentioned today that we are going to use our built-in platform for PD, which is called Simple K-12. We are not going to have Dr. Kalise Barnum with us due to scheduling conflicts and due to, from being open and honest price point. But Simple K-12 has over twenty thousand different webinars that are both live and that are recorded that deal with a variety of topics, and they have over fifty to sixty different ones on diversity, equity, cultural proficiency, what it looks like from an institutional standpoint, what it looks like from a classroom standpoint, and then what it looks like from a personal standpoint. So we are gonna begin that with our staff. The nice thing about Simple K-12 is that it tracks everything that you do. It tracks every piece of professional development that you take on whatever topic, and then it keeps it for you. So when you are either asked, or when an administrator needs to look at it, or when you want to now renew your certification, you have that ability. So that is part of our now year-long piece of professional development that we are gonna weave into, we're gonna weave equity and cultural proficiency and diversity into that through our built-in professional development platform, which is updated weekly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Bob, just one more thing that I want to add. And I just, with all due respect, I just want to add this piece to this. Understanding the role of school committee as it pertains to you as a political figure, you as a parent in the district, you as a person in our communities. I know you are chief advocates for our kids, and I appreciate that. It comes through. You bleed black and red. You support us as administrators. You support our teachers, support our administrative staff. But over the past week, I've had some situations that I think need to be brought up to the committee as I statements and some asks of this as the committee, knowing your roles as your, understanding the budget and processing the budget, doing policy for the district, and as Mr. Small has said in the past, hiring and firing the superintendent, all of which I think you do an admirable job on. But I would do an ask, I've been asked for some information by some members that I feel uncomfortable giving without sharing it with the committee when it pertains to budget, specifics to certain programs within, in the district. And I want to remind the committee members that you are a district-wide committee and not a school-based committee. And I know everybody has their allegiances to certain schools, and I appreciate that. I would ask that if things are pertaining to specific programs or budgets, that those questions be asked through the chair. It puts me in a very awkward position to not share information with the entire committee and just one member. And it, and I'm just being specific. There was a question about the TLC program and why we don't have a TLC program at Duval School. We have one at Indian Head, and we have one at Conley. We developed one as a, as a district program because we just, we, we had some funds available, and there was a specific need at Indian Head, and we didn't want students to travel across town. It was a decision that I made with my leadership team to put that program in. I was asked for some specifics. I didn't want to share that just one-to-one. It puts me in a very awkward position. The other piece is when you're advocating for people in the district or going to meetings. I would ask that if you attend a meeting of school council, an open meeting at a school or a PTO meeting, that you give the principal a heads up that you're gonna attend. No matter what you think, you are political figures, and meetings change as soon as you walk into that meeting. There's an expectation that puts my folks, they get very nervous when they see school committee. They love you all to death, but they get very nervous that they're gonna misspeak, or they're going to give you a bad idea. And that's gonna come back to me as a relation. We have a great relationship with our building leaders. I encourage you to get out and engage with our community. But when you, when you attend a meeting, I would like you, I would just ask you, as a courtesy, give the principal a heads up that you're gonna attend their, their PTO meeting or their school council meeting or their whatever meeting. I know Dr. Jones had one tonight, and you're there as a parent. You're not there as a school committee member. Because as soon as you say that you're coming in, parents will maybe ask you questions. And I know Mr. Small and Mr. Hayes and Mr. Jones at Fatic Events have been brought, brought things to me because people see you as school committee members. So we had a situation, I had a, I had a principal who was pretty upset last night that a school committee member was in a meeting, and she felt that it didn't go well, and she felt she had done something wrong, and that advice was given to her. And again, I'm trying not to say it was done in malice, but perception is reality. And the perception of my principal was that the school committee member gave her or was pushing her in a direction to put things in her budget that wasn't in her purview. So I want to bring that out to the committee. And for me in particular, I've been asked in certain emails, or there's an expectation in particular to our busing contract, that I was, I was told that a school committee member insisted on being in negotiations with our bus contracts. I feel that's, that puts me in a real bind. You are all my evaluators, and for me to say no or yes to one or another puts me in a really difficult professional position. So I would ask if those asks come from this committee, they follow through the chair, and we have a conversation. It just, it, I appreciate everything that you folks do. I think that we are in a great situation in our communities, but I just, you asked me for transparency and the truth. I'm advocating for my staff. I appreciate what we do, but I felt uncomfortable, and I don't want to feel uncomfortable around you folks. I can have great conversations, but when we cross the line into specifics, I don't want to be, I don't want to be accused of giving one person information and not the entire group. That has happened in the past with previous administrations that people knew and not everybody knew. I don't want to do that, so I don't want any uncomfortable situations to arise. If folks have phone calls or if they have questions about things, I will be very upfront, say I can't share that with you. Please don't take that as a personal piece of it. I have to look at things globally, and I have to look at this group as a whole, as a ten-member group. And I will also say that if each person asked me to do two or three things, that would be forty or fifty things that we're doing. I, you are the best interest of our kids at heart, but this is the group, these are the meetings, and if there are conversations or pieces that we need to talk about, this is the place to have that. So I would ask that if you're gonna attend things, I know engagement is one of our goals, but getting out there and engaging folks, if you're gonna be with folks that, you know, somebody's running a meeting, please just say, I'm here just to listen. I think the principals know that you support us. You've said that multiple times. But it just was an uncomfortable situation for one of my principals yesterday, and I reminisced that I didn't share that with you folks because I don't want you folks to misstep. I think you have great respect within our communities. You're advocates for our kids, but this is, this is what I feel has been going, I have to share this because it's happened over the past week or two, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Excuse me, Mr. Small.
And I know this has come up in the past, and I know I've tried to prescribe to this. You know, there are some very specific interests I have. CPAC happens to be one of them. But I won't attend a meeting because the people that are there at that meeting and part of that group, they may not say what they want to say. And I think we've had this conversation quite a few times already. If whoever it was, and I have no clue here, but whoever it was, if they have a child at that school and they were there as a parent, they have to act as a parent. If they don't have a child at that school, to me, that's problematic because you're going as a school committee member, but you, you're not speaking for our committee. And parents and people, they really don't, you know, feel free to say whatever they want to say. And that's the whole, you know, purpose of the taxes for them to be able to function autonomously. And don't get me wrong, they do incredible, incredible work. Incredible. You know, I won't miss a, you know, a day when they have their auction, you know, from Conley, if they ever get back to them, hopefully next year. It's a great time. But I go, I stand in the corner, I bid on things and spend some money and have some fun. But that's it. That's the extent of it. I don't want to make people uncomfortable or stop people from saying something that they wouldn't normally want to say.
Fred.
My little soapbox.
Fred, excuse me, one second. That's not true. You stood right beside me and ran me up on three or four items at that auction. I remember that.
We both left to keep a few bucks that night. But I think I cost you something on that wooden American flag, that's for sure.
I know you did. Dan?
Jeff, I think the staff had to go through that, especially after we just, a couple of months ago, had a session with MASC telling us our roles. You know, we sat there for an hour or two going over things. And if it's just recently happened, people aren't paying attention to these things that MASC is coming up with. I mean, we just had that meeting two, two, three months ago. So sorry you had to go through that again with your and all your staff.
That's it, Bob. I appreciate, I appreciate the committee listening. We're all in this together. We've said this since, since last March. I will say that my job, our job, my teacher's job, all of our roles have changed drastically. Mr. Hayes said this perfectly the other day when I was venting to him. You're putting out fires every day. And no fraud, after Thursday, after Wednesday's issues I was watching on TV all day that I think I was gonna have to shut the high school down because of lack of staff while putting together statements about what was going on historically in our country. So we are, we're doing the best we can, and I need this partnership to work for us, the district, as a, as a district. At Whitman-Hanson, we had that last year. We had split lines. I feel our committee has come together as a unit, and we need to see our district as a whole. We work together as a, as a WHEA. Teachers and administrators can live peacefully together. I want the school committee and the superintendent and all buildings to live together peacefully and productively in the best interest of our kids, because that's what we're all here for. So I appreciate your time and hearing me out on that. And just two other, one other thing. Matt Feeney contacted me today about the water department and the bill, and I'm asking you if we can have an executive session only next Wednesday to discuss the water bill and to discuss my contract in person.
That's not an issue. We can do that.
I just didn't know if people were available because it's not a standing meeting.
Okay, I'll take a consensus. Hillary, are you available?
I can make myself available.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Scriven.
Available through Zoom, correct?
I would prefer in person, Chris, especially with the, with the negotiations in the water department and my contract.
Yeah, that's right.
It's gonna be an executive session only.
When is the meeting? Sorry?
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday at six, if possible, Mr. Jones.
Chris Scriven.
Sorry, Bob. Yeah, I'll be there.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Fred.
Remote only.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Don Byers.
Yes.
David Forth.
Yep.
Bob Hayes, excuse me, yes. Dan Colliday.
No problem.
I take that as a yes. Okay, we're good with it.
And you said, I'm sorry, you said six P M. For the time.
Six o'clock, W H R H S Library.
Well, I'm done with my superintendent's report.
All right, unfinished business. Hanson Budget Liaison. Jeff, I think you talked to him, didn't you?
Kevin Sullivan is our liaison.
Okay. Okay, next up, new donations. This is always an easy part of the job. I've got three, four donations. Two gentlemen, I would entertain a motion to accept the gift of two Chromebooks, one from Mr. Small and one from Justin Evans to the Whitman Hanson Regional School District. An entertaining motion to accept. Mr. Colliday, Mr. Boyce seconded. Discussion.
In spirit of, in spirit of Mr. Boyce, I, you know, made the commitment to donate the Chromebook. Mr. Boyce, thank you for giving me that little push.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just hope it goes to good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Freddie, you're done?
Yeah, Mr. Hayes, you're welcome to donate one.
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Chair, can we just give a thank you to Selectmen Justin Evans and his wife? Just very nice people. I got a message the, the day after our meeting and you know, he was just, you know, you really inspired me, I want to do something. And I, I don't think it was just in the season of giving. My idea is the season of giving is four seasons. And I know that's how, how we all contribute here. But it's, it's so good to see younger stepping into like our selectmen roles and so forth. And, and he, I didn't volunteer in his class, but I had his sister in one of the classes, obviously would go to the computer lab. This was when we turned over to Deval in 2000. I'm not trying to put an age on these young.
Don't leave me on the age stuff.
Very nice of them though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard. This is on the seconding the donation.
Are you awesome? Thank you.
Yes.
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 Mr. Fourth.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Colliday.
Yep.
Mr. Small. Mr. Jones. Mr. Scriven. Mr. Boyce. Ms. Sniffin. Okay, thank you very much. I have two more. Good morning, Michelle. Happy New Year. My name is Emily DeVito and I am the coordinator of charitable contributions to Stop &amp; Shop. We have been working hard in our Whitman Mass store to update it and bring new features to our customers. We will be having a grand reopening of the Whitman Stop &amp; Shop on January 15th. As a part of this, we would love to provide the Whitman Hanson School District with $1,000 in Stop &amp; Shop gift cards to assist you in your efforts to support your students during the difficult times. Forgive me for not knowing what model of schooling you are using. A few of our hybrid school recipients have used the gift card to purchase snacks for students or given the gift cards directly to families they know that are in need. We'd love to have either yourself or a representative of the school come to the Whitman store in January 15th to accept the gift cards and take a brief photo. If you would like to hop on a call, I'm happy to do so as well. I'm a bit busy today, but I could call you tomorrow. Thank you and look forward to working together. Emily Pedejo, Coordinator of Charitable Giving at Stop &amp; Shop, home base 1385 Hancock Street in Quincy. I would entertain a motion and like to thank Stop &amp; Shop from the committee for donating $1,000 in gift cards.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the $1,000 donation from Whitman Stop &amp; Shop and pass the gift cards to the both Whitman and Hanson Food Pantry is for a 50/50 split as they will be better known to who knows what families are in need at this time.
Dan, can we accept the gift cards then make a motion afterwards to do that, to keep it separate? Would that be all right?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. Hayes.
Okay, this is the, I'm sorry. We're in discussion, go ahead.
And I don't know if you'll be speaking to Ms. DeVito or if someone from administration was. A long thought out idea of mine. When you check out at the supermarket, they ask if you want to donate a dollar to the Jimmy Fund or, you know, various different charities, all worthwhile and all good charities. But where is their local? I would hope that they would have the ability to ask at the, you know, in lieu of that, maybe for a period period of two or three months out of the year, you know, would you like to donate a dollar to Whitman Hanson Regional School District or dollars for scholars? I've never been able to get in touch with anybody, though I've tried to be able to put forth that idea other than at the store level.
I think Fred, that's a good thing to pass on to Mike Ganzer. I've got this woman's name and number.
Okay, if you, if you could actually supply me with her name and number, I'll be glad to call her myself.
I don't have a number, but I definitely have a name. You can get it from Michelle on the bottom.
It's on the bottom of her.
So I'm going to be there. I'm going to get it. I'll talk to her. I'll be there. I'm going to get the photo up with that on Friday. If anybody wants to come in 11 o'clock, I'll be at Stop &amp; Shop in Whitman accepting the gift cards on behalf of the district. So, so I'll, but that's a great question. I will, I will have face to face with her on Friday and say, can they do that?
Oh, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Okay, let's accept the gift cards. Anyone else? Seeing none, Hillary. Steve, Boyce.
Yes.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Fred Small.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Don Byers.
Yes.
Dave Forth.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Dan Colliday.
Yes.
Okay, Dan Colliday made a motion to, now that we've accepted the gift cards, to pass them on to the food pantries of Whitman and Hanson. I, I think I would ask the, Dan made the motion, can someone second it?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, Fred.
Then when, when the opportunity arises.
Second, Fred's first. I, I would almost, I, I know what Dan, Dan's thought is and I think that he's probably correct, but I think the superintendent throughout the school district probably has some views on some families and whether they were given directly to the school district versus not to the food pantries. Is it sort of saying to Stop &amp; Shop, why didn't you just give them to the food pantry instead of giving them to the school district? That's my only thing. Go ahead, Fred.
And I would think in today's age that it's somewhat easily identifiable of what to do and what families are in need, that, you know, we can provide the service direct. And that way we know that, and we can look Stop &amp; Shop in the eye and say they went exactly as intended. Not saying the food pantry isn't good. I donate myself there. But, you know, for the district itself to hand that card to a family, you know, and it's one of our students and it goes direct, we, we've controlled that and we've done exactly what Stop &amp; Shop intended. And I believe that would be the more appropriate avenue.
Anyone, Hillary?
Sorry. Um, I, I mean, Jeff and George can speak to this, but at schools, you know, there are adjustment counselors and even classroom teachers and, and have background of families and students and their needs. So while I think it's a, a nice gesture, I do agree with Mr. Small. I think that sending it directly to the schools and them finding the students, you know, because you also don't know who goes, you know, if, if a adjustment counselor or someone has identified a family as a family in need, that's not to say that they're going to utilize the food pantry. You know, I, I think that there is some, I don't know, modesty for lack of a better term. And then that way you know that you're giving it directly to that family in need as opposed to wondering if they're getting it in that.
Anyone else?
Okay, just I'll withdraw the motion and then leave it as is.
And who did the second?
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. I know, Dan, I know your heart was in the right place, 150%. I mean, it's, it's awesome. It's, it's awesome that everybody is thinking so much of giving and taking care of these two beautiful communities that we live in. So, yeah, I've got one more. January 4th, 2021, from Mr. Justin Jerome, President of Hanson Run and Gun Club. Dear Mr. Jerome Executive Board and Club Members, on behalf of Whitman Hanson Regional School District and School Committee Members, I am ready to thank the Hanson Run and Gun Club for the generous donation to Whitman Hanson Regional School District. We greatly appreciate your donation of $5,000 that will provide supplementary financial support for families in need. This is even more significant given the impact to the families during the COVID pandemic. School district's first priority is our students. Education certainly looks a lot different right now. Many students are attending school in a hybrid remote plan and are learning from home. Many parents have lost jobs or are also working from home trying to balance their family life. You have made it possible for us to help families who are struggling and need even more support than ever before. The Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee will meet on January 13th, 2021 to vote to the considerable donation of $5,000 so the school district can deliver gift cards to our local families in need. Again, many thanks for the generous donations to the families in Whitman and Hanson Regional School District. Excuse me, sincerely, Jeff Simonak, Superintendent of Schools. An entertaining motion to accept the $5,000 in gift cards.
Seconded by Dan?
Seconded by Mr. Colliday. Any discussion? Isn't it unbelievable that we have two giant supporters in the towns of Whitman and Hanson, again, supporting our families in this terrible time of need that we're facing? So congratulations to Stop &amp; Shop and Hanson Run and Gun Club for, for this process. I mean, they came out of, out of nowhere, so to speak, and realized this need and, and made this generous donation. Is there any further discussion before I move to the vote? Seeing none? Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Fourth.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes. Yes, Ms. Sniffin.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
And Mr. Colliday.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Again, very generous donation. Next up is substitute pay rates. As you heard earlier, and I forget her name, the woman who called in, she was very, very nice. She's a substitute teacher. I hope she's watching this part of the meeting. Jeff?
Sure. So, so we had a conversation, we've had a conversation since last year about trying to increase the amount of substitutes we've had. We've looked at different districts about their pay rate. And then, as you know, the state went to a, a minimum wage of 1350 an hour. And our substitute teachers and our, our substitute parents, our non-instructional aides, were not making minimum wage. So I'm asking you to look at this. As an increase in our substitute pay, we're raising it from a non-licensed daily sub $75 a day or $1072 an hour to $100 a day or 1350 an hour, which is minimum rate. Or, or licensed substitute teacher, licensed by D E S I from $85 a day or $1215 an hour to $110 per day or $1572 an hour. And our substitute instructional and non, and non, our non-instructional aides currently make $1117 an hour, which is less than Dollar Tree, to $81 per day or 1350 an hour. I'd like that in one motion, please, if possible.
An entertaining motion to.
Looking to accept what the superintendent just read, the substitute pay.
Mr. Colliday, the motion.
Mr. Small was seconded.
Small seconded it. Discussion?
Discussion.
Brad?
Uh, this was something we identified four years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, that we, this was coming up. You know, it's taken this long, but you know, I, I don't think that you're able to obtain subs easily. I think it's a very big problem in a non-COVID world at the current rates, never mind in a COVID world. You know, this is fair, it's reasonable and it's something we should act on.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the vote. Mr. Colliday. Mr. Hayes, yes. Mr. Fourth.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Ms. Sniffin.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next up. I believe the role of municipal representative for the collective bargaining. We, both towns had agreed to the intern town which was Lisa. And she was not named to be, there is a new town administrator. And at the time she was the acting town administrator. Now Hanson had come to a meeting and said they would like to have her do it. With her not being the administrator, that changes. So I think we need to go back to Hanson and to Whitman to discuss who the new municipal rep are, if it's still going to be Lisa. Because we have had a, a change in, in the town. What's your feeling?
I think if we send a letter to both boards of selectmen and asking them exactly how they want us to proceed.
That's my thought.
You know, perhaps they have a joint meeting themselves via Zoom. You know, and they come up with the representative or they may want Lisa to continue on in that role if she's so willing.
Right, but that, I'm just bringing it up because there's been a change and I hate to just move forward when there could be a change. You know, there's been a change at the top in Whitman and the agreement with Hanson, you know, they came to one of our meetings and voted it. So I think we, we owe them the, a letter stating, how would you like us to proceed?
Well, I think also the way it was worded was the interim town man, town administrator.
Yes.
And that position is going to be going away in a few weeks.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. We haven't added the full bargaining. I think we need to, to make this. So Michelle, if, if you direct me so, we'll have Michelle send them a letter. Okay, everybody all right with that? No questions? Okay. And final subcommittee reports. Whitman School Building Committee.
Uh, we met earlier this week. There's basically, you know, not a whole heck of a lot going on, but the one thing is the census as far as estimated population. The administration has turned in what they feel the, of a size of a school for approximately 900 students. MSBA has come back to us for a much lower count of 600. We're in the process of going back and forth with the different building projections, et cetera. And hopefully we can get to a palatable number as to what size we're talking about. And I see Jeff's hand up. I didn't butcher anything, did I?
No, you're not. I just have an update. At our meeting on Monday, when we met with the building committee, we are taking on the responsibility of refuting some of those numbers that they provided. So we are in contact with, and we're in contact with today, N E S D E C, which is a New England School Development Educational Cooperative, which handles and does a lot of this work. They did a data analysis by population for the whole school district in 2008. What we are doing with them is they are doing one just for the town of Whitman. Some of the interesting things is Bob, when MSBA pulls their data, are their data points. N E S D E C is doing a little bit different data points. So hopefully we can get some, some new input from them. As recently as today, we were going back and forth and we're providing them with information so they can provide us with information. So hopefully we come to some, a good number that we both feel good about that as the project moves forward, we can be happy with and will support our students if it in fact does go through for a new middle school.
So.
That it, Fred?
That's pretty much where we're at.
Any questions for Fred?
Chair Hayes.
Don.
Are these enrollment numbers for fifth through eighth grade or sixth through eighth? Is that the discrepancy?
No, it's fifth through eighth. The enrollment numbers too, so that we can be aligned with both towns.
Okay, so MSBA was predict, projecting 600 for those four grades?
Correct. That's what I, yeah, yeah. Boy, we have an issue. Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Pilgrimage Cooperative.
Elaborative. We didn't meet and, we didn't have a January meeting. We, we'll be meeting Thursday, February 4th at our regular meeting and resume business. We didn't have enough on the docket. We covered enough in December.
Mr. Boyce. Facilities.
Uh, we haven't met.
Okay. Policy, just, I know you've got this on the tip of your tongue, Don. You, don't you have a meeting coming up? This would probably be the time to with, with the gentleman from East Ridge, Jim Hardy.
Yeah, we're meeting via Zoom on January 25th at 4:30, Policy Subcommittee.
January 25th at 4:30?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Send an extra invitation my way. I wouldn't mind sitting in on that.
Insurance Subcommittee.
Uh, we're still in a holding pattern. Nothing's changed since our last meeting or our last report, I should say. Uh, we're still, uh, in a, uh, holding pattern. Nothing's changed since our last meeting or our last report, I should say.
Negotiation Subcommittee, Mike.
Get unmute.
Mike, you've got unmute. There you go.
So, uh, currently no, we're going to be meeting with the, uh, teachers shortly.
Okay. And Regional Agreement Committee?
We have not met.
Okay. Okay, I'd entertain, thank you, everyone. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Small, make that.
Fred made it and I think Dan seconded it.
That's right.
Michelle. Hillary.
Yes.
Steve Boyce.
Yes.
Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Fred Small.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Don Byers.
Yes.
David Forth.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Dan Collery.
Yes.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.